I'd like to call this Citi Council meeting to order. If you please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. We welcome you here this evening. There are copies of the agenda on the back table along with listening devices if you require them, and of course, we do encourage you to sign in in the back either during or after tonight's meeting. Members present this evening are council members Gearbaugh, CEO, Rice, Lesch, Harmout, Mayor Potem Dillon, and Mayor Morrow. From city staff, we have Acting City Manager Treasure Cole, Clerk Royal, Engineer Humphris. Our Assistant Engineer is here along with our Wastewater Treatment Superintendent. I think that's everyone from city staff. Is there a motion at this time to approve the agenda as submitted unless there are amendments?
Moved by CEO to approve as submitted. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mayor Potem Dillon. All those in favor of approving the agenda as submitted signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who say nay, ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. There are no absences, so we'll proceed with our first public comment period. Under the Open Meetings Act, any person may come forward at this time, make comment or question on an item that appears on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but of course, not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Are there any citizen comments on agenda items this evening? I will defer to the city clerk. Do we receive any written comments in advance of tonight's meeting in which the individual wanted their remarks read at this time?
Yes, sir.
Easy enough. Then we will proceed with the one and only presentation on tonight's agenda, which is the U.S. 12 Project Presentation.
Good evening. My name is Chris Wall. I'm here with Breanna Anderson from Wade Trim.
If you wouldn't mind, make sure that green light is illuminated on the base of that. It is okay. Yep, and you can just pull that a little bit closer, and feel free to adjust the podium if you'd like as well.
Thank you. So once again, my name is Chris Wall with Wade Trim, joined with Breanna Anderson also with Wade Trim, and we have a presentation on the West U.S. 12 Sidewalk Project. I think that presentation is up. Everybody can see that.
Yes.
All right. So this is...
I'll just do it anyway.
Okay.
All right. Next slide. So part of this presentation is to engage the public, also city council and staff, to talk about this very important project to fill the sidewalk gap on U.S. 12, where we want to engage and ask for questions from the public as well as address any comments the public might have as well as concerns, so we can improve this project. Some of the engagement that we have already taken on and performed is one-on-one discussions with property owners along the sidewalk project. We've sent out informational letters to residents that surround the sidewalk project, and we're presenting tonight as well. There's many opportunities to also engage on this project. You can email, phone us, as well as set up meetings. We're happy to do virtual as well as in-person meetings on this. And the city also has a very nice webpage on this project, and the link is on the slide down here. So an overview on this project. The sidewalk gap is on the north side of Michigan Avenue. It starts at the bridge over the Saline River and extends from the west side all the way past the express tire and connects into the existing sidewalk next to the dealership there on the north side of Michigan Avenue. That's about 3,000 feet of sidewalk when you also add in the little spur that we take along the south side of Austin Drive. Now, many of you are probably familiar with Austin Drive. The north side is kind of vegetated, it kind of has a little hill, so the south side is kind of well situated to have that sidewalk there. That sidewalk along Austin Drive would have kind of a spur off of the sidewalk along Michigan Avenue and then tie in to the sidewalk using a crosswalk, cross Austin Drive and tie in at St. Andrews Church on that sidewalk there. We'll also have another crosswalk to access the sidewalk at Saline River Drive. So it's a really important connection to connect all the neighborhoods there to Milpon, to the downtown environment. What's really exciting about this project is we're seeking a transportation alternative program, also called a TAP grant. The deadline for that application is February 19th, and using that application, we hope to provide 70% of the funding for this project. Next slide. Some of the key elements of this project are a six-foot wide concrete sidewalk. We're looking to make that a six-foot wide rather than a five-foot wide sidewalk because of the proximity to Michigan Avenue, because of all the traffic along there. It gives greater comfort for users of that sidewalk. All the ramps, the crossings are going to be ADA compliant, so all the users can use and traverse that sidewalk in a safe manner. Wherever we cross a driveway or a curb and gutter or a catch basin, all of those locations will be replaced and repaired. Any disturbed lawns or landscaping will be restored, and then as part of the construction process, we will have maintaining, we will maintain like two-way traffic, and there might be some disruption of pedestrian flow and vehicle flow during construction. So I'll hand the rest of the presentation over to Breanna.
Thank you, Chris. Next slide, please. So just to reiterate the project goals, where this project will connect the west side of town and those neighborhoods to the Milpon area and the downtown Saline District. So that's a really important connection that the community is excited to see, and it'll also provide more equity for alternative transportation, such as walking, biking, scooting, whatever mode people prefer, aside from just vehicles along U.S. 12. And it'll also improve the safety and provide a safe route along U.S. 12 for all users, as well as increasing the visibility for crossings on Austin Drive. Next, please. So to cover the timeline going forward for this project, as Chris mentioned, the application for the TAP grant is February 19th. So once we apply to that, we should find out by July of this year whether that TAP grant is to be awarded for this project. And if that does not come through, then we'll take our time to assess other funding sources. Assuming that the TAP grant is awarded for this project, we will move into the final design phase from July through the winter of this upcoming year, because this project will be going through the M.D. Michigan Department of Transportation Local Agency Program, the M.L.A.P. Program. That will entail environmental reviews, historical preservation reviews, as well as securing easements for temporary grading, as well as any permanent easements that are needed for the project. Once that goes through final review, we expect the project would be bid out in the spring of 2026, followed by permitting and contractor award with construction starting next fall. At the very latest, it could be the spring of 2027. So you should have before you the memorandum for the resolution for the funding aspect. So the current engineer's estimate for this project is $722,000, and we are planning to apply for 70% of that in terms of the TAP grant, so that's about $505,000. And therefore, we're asking for the 30% matching commitment of $216,000 from the city. So that's what we're seeking tonight. And then the last slide. Just wanted to thank you for having us present here today, and this is our team. So if you need to reach out with any questions, you can direct design and engineering questions to Wade Trim. Chris Wall's information is there. And if there's any specific property questions or inquiries, we are working with O.R. Colon, and they're managing the property aspect of the project. And then we're working with the city. Tasha and Caitlin from Department of Public Works are available to answer any questions on the city side. So thank you very much, and we'll take...
Very good, and I appreciate the presentation. This is a project that is, or initiative rather, that's long overdue. There's been many people in the community, including several of my colleagues up here at the DA's, who've been stout advocates for this for many years. And so we're excited that we're on a good trajectory here, and hopefully, construction can commence in 2026 or 2027 and be completed in the next two calendar years. We'll begin with, we'll start with a round of questions, and this evening, I'm going to begin to my right and end to my left. So I'll start with Councilmember Lesch and end with Councilmember Harmout. Councilmember Lesch, any questions for our guests this evening?
Just one. So, you know, the stretch between Mills Road and Austin Road, will there be any planned additional crosswalks across Michigan Avenue or, because, you know, it's a fairly long stretch where I know I've seen many people try to cut across the highway, and I just wasn't sure if M.D. was going to go for another crossing or not.
Maybe we can pull up the, back it up for the map. But currently, we are not proposing any other crosswalk crossings on Michigan Avenue. Not to say that we can't investigate something like that, but at this point in time, we're not proposing one.
Yeah, I just wasn't sure if that was planned or not. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Lesch. Councilmember CEO.
Just one. Have you started yet talking with the private residences along Michigan Ave. there about easements across the property?
Yes. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I'm sorry. Has there been any resistance?
So far, we've tried to reach every single property owner that would be impacted by the sidewalk, and to our knowledge, we've probably talked to every single one. And so far, we haven't met any resident that was strongly opposed to the project. We've frankly have been kind of surprised that we've actually encountered some residents that have been very supportive actually of the project, refreshingly so. Some have expressed a strong desire to have this amenity here because of the connectivity to Milpon and to the downtown, so it's, so far, so good. I mean, there's a lot of detail still to be worked out, but in working with those residents so far, it's been very positive.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. CEO. Mayor Potem Dillon.
Thank you. I've definitely been one of the ones that have been advocating for this project from before I was on council, so it's been at least 11 years. And so I'm happy to see that we're making steps to get closer. The timeframe is a little discouraging, another two years. I mean, we've been actively working on this now for more than five, so it's a little discouraging that we haven't been able to get there, especially considering we had 200,000 budgeted in '21, that if we would have saved that 200 and then added the 200 now, we would have only needed, you know, a smaller dollar amount to get there. I think the longer we defer this project, the more the cost is going to keep going up. So if it's something we're going to do, we have to just find a means to do it. And with that, I want to be adamant about the fact that if we don't get the same grant, that we really need to look at other funding sources to make this happen. This is something that we've committed to for the west side residents and for the expansion on the west side. I did want to touch base on, you mentioned about informational letters. I did get one. Thank you very much. It is very nice to have a proactive approach and so that the residents know what's going on and know to get involved. I have a couple of questions. How much right of way is going to be needed from each of the properties?
In general, most of, the majority of the easements are going to be temporary grading easements, and that should only be about five feet or so. For most of the sidewalk, we're able to work fully within the right of way, and we're just trying to make sure we have enough space for the contractor. There is one area that we anticipate will be a permanent easement, and I believe off the top of my head, probably no more than 15 feet or so, but I don't have a specific...
That's okay. Most of those properties have mature trees in their front yards. Will those trees have to be removed? Do you know?
There are a few trees that we've identified that we simply can't work around, and we've communicated that to the residents as well. But many of the trees will stay in place, and we are trying to keep them in place, and that's shown in the alignment and how we work around those trees.
Fantastic. How far will the sidewalk be off of the roadway?
I believe it's about at least two to four feet at the narrowest. There's one section closest to the bridge where it's adjacent to the curb itself, but I believe there's at least four feet in other areas, and then other areas even more.
Oh, that's fantastic, because I was going to ask then, my next follow-up was, do we need to install any kind of a barrier between the roadway and the sidewalk if it's going to be very close? Because I know it is kind of a little bit, I'll be honest with you, dicey, going over the bridge. You're really right on the roadway. And then I think I want to sort of tag along to Mr. Lesch's question about crosswalks. It does seem like we are definitely going to need to explore crosswalks. I will say that the, where the Austin Road, Michigan Avenue sidewalk will intersect, that is a natural place where people play Frogger. It's the automatic crossing spot for people. So, I mean, that may be something to look at as sort of in the midst of the project. So I wanted to mention that. The other question I had, and I apologize for having so many questions, this is literally like my yard, is Whitlock Street. There's been an ongoing issue with Whitlock Street. Because there are no sidewalks and such, there's no bus service that goes there. So students that live on Whitlock Street actually traverse through private property to get to Saline River Drive to get a bus. So is there an opportunity for safer routes to schools to be part of a funding source for part of this, or if something were not to happen, looking into what would be required so that they could have a bus stop there at some point?
Possibly. We'll have to investigate.
No, no, no. These are just things, ideas I'm just, I'm kind of just putting out there that I would just like to ask about. So I appreciate that, and with that, I will yield my time.
Very good. Councilmember Gearbaugh, any questions for our guests?
Just a couple, thank you. I've had a couple citizens reach out. One of them was, they're concerned with the cost of 723,000 or whatever the number was. What's the breakout of that? I mean, where do we really, is that the cost of construction of a sidewalk?
This cost includes the work elements, the construction estimated costs, and we have tried to anticipate, being that it won't be bid out for another year, we've tried to anticipate some of that inflation. It does also include, 15% of that is construction inspection, so that is another portion of that 7,000, 700,000.
Because part of the thing too is, there was questions asked about utilities and also the Austin Drive issue that we're putting in this sidewalk, and that Austin Drive itself probably needs work. This may be for our staff coordination, if any other work that's going to happen at that point, just things to consider. And then the other one, Washington Street, even though I know the work is going to be mostly on the south side of Austin Drive, there's a number of things there with Austin Drive and whatever else, and I didn't know if we were going to coordinate with that. And then, as we talked about funding, another opportunity I hope would be the non-motorized millage from Washtenaw County, to see if we can adjust, to get that money instead of us having to put up the other 200,000, maybe the county could come up with that. I don't know if there's any restrictions with the SEMCOG grant, but that's my hope that we could access those funds also. And then the one other issue with the sidewalk was, if there's any historic issues related to the Ford School property, those can be, those will be done through the design study that you, I mean, the background work that you'll be doing in terms of historic preservation and all that with account with the state.
Yes. Because of the federal funding of the grant, we will be going through the Historical Preservation Office, and we've done projects in the area, so we do the study, we pull any historical records, and we assess if there's going to be any impacts to those historical properties, and we submit that for review. So that will be addressed during the final design.
Just for another comment, I'm hoping that whatever we do successfully, this can actually be laid over on the Ford property on the north, on the east side of town to get the connection between downtown all the way out to, well, would be the Rentschler Farm and all of that. We way too long postponed on it. If we can't get a grant, then we need to look at getting the sidewalk or assessing for that sidewalk against that Ford property. This would connect everything on Michigan Avenue, being able to transfer all the way from the west side of town to the east side of town, so that we connect all our historical properties. Thank you.
Acting City Manager Cole, we may want to check the master file in the City Manager's office. I think that former City Manager Colleen O'Toole sent letters to a variety of properties, including Ford Motor Company, regarding sidewalk deficiencies or the lack of a pathway sidewalk on certain parcels in town. I'm not sure if any response or any subsequent communication happened, but I know that was an instruction made by City Council back in 2021, so we may have a follow-up on that. If not, well, regardless, I think an additional communication in the early months of 2025 would be appropriate. Very good. Councilmember Rice, any questions for our guests?
I think the only elephant in the room here is our continued discussion on feasibility of either keeping or removing the dam. That's going to come up in your conversations with these community members. Just keeping in touch with the city engineer and having those answers ready for those folks, or having the availability for the city engineer to answer those questions, I think is going to be really important. That's all.
Councilmember Harmout, any questions for our guests?
I do. So just to tag along that last comment, yes, there is the feasibility. Would any investments into this project be impacted by, let's just say there was a decision to remove the dam, which again, it's to keep or remove the dam, would that impact the cost? Would that impact the, what would that impact?
Right now, because of the proximity of the sidewalk proposed adjacent to the roadway, most likely, anything that's done along the impoundment zone by the dam would impact the sidewalk project. So at this point, I don't envision this intermingling with that project at this point. It might present some opportunities down the road in terms of maybe expansion of the sidewalk, but at this point in time, I don't see that, any decisions on that project interfering with this project.
So not, not... Other question I have about the 15% construction inspection, who does that get paid to? Because that's $108,000. That's pretty substantial.
So that is like construction engineering oversight. So once the, once the contractor is selected and the, we're paying the contractor to do all the work, you have a, usually a subconsultant overseeing the contractor, make sure they're building it properly. So it would be an engineer or some, like us, that would be contracted to do that work through the city, and that's who that, that's who would be getting paid. But through this program, you can actually get that reimbursed through that program. So rather than the city paying out of pocket for those services, you can get that reimbursed through the TAP grant.
Okay. And then, and you said that that was your, the inspection portion of that, or that's a third party?
Well, we love it to be us, but we're not on the hook for that, those design or those construction services at this point in time. That's up for city staff to make that decision.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Councilmember Harmout?
I do have one additional question. So we would have available the breakdown of that 722,000, if we wanted to have that breakdown? Okay, thank you.
Very good. Thank you both. We appreciate your time this evening. We will, we look forward to discussing next steps in the ensuing months. If any additional questions come up from my council colleagues or concerns, please direct those to our associates from Wade Trim or through the Acting City Manager. My apologies, Mr. Briggs, I was notified just moments ago that perhaps you would like to say a few comments about a recent issue that transpired at the water treatment plant? Is that correct?
Pardon?
Yeah. Well, you and I talked around 3 o'clock this afternoon along with Acting City Manager Cole, so maybe you can reiterate the points you made during that meeting.
So the situation arose actually last week, we first noticed it after the installation of the VT SCADA at the water plant. It turns out, one of the pumps, they had listed as a spare pump, it's actually our number three pump for potassium permanginate. And so that pump is activated when we have a backwash. And it turns out that that pump was not scaled properly. We thought we had it figured out last week, but we figured it out today, that it was probably close to maybe twice what the potassium permanginate that we needed being pumped in while it was being backwashed. So the way this works is when the backwash happens, we inject potassium permanginate in that water, and that's finished water from the other two cells go to the cell that's being backwashed. So that recharges the ion, the bed that's inside of the filter to help it be more attractive to the iron that we're trying to sequester out of there. So when that happens, it backwashes, and then it switches and goes to another one. Well, if you've got too much potassium permanginate going in there, then when it turns around to flush out, to settle everything down, some of that potassium permanginate's not getting used, so it comes out. So that's where this pink water has come from. And I did a calculation today for the amount of runtime of the pump and how much water's used, and so we were feeding, we're supposed to be feeding about three parts per million of potassium permanginate into that backwash water when it happens. So because this pump was scaled improperly, we were feeding more than that in there. And that, in turn, when it flushed back out, then came back out into the water as finished water when that cell starts to, when that particular filter starts to be used for backwashing the other ones. So in the process of that, you've seen these pictures. This, this particular picture is a picture of the bucket, the fire hydrant between our driveway and the church driveway.
Saline Water Works.
Yeah. And that is the pink tinge that we have had in the water because of some that made it out into the system before we realized it. But once my operator Ben realized what was going on, he called me and I said, well, shut the plant down, so we don't put any more out than we absolutely have to. And so we shut the plant down, we rinsed the filters until everything pink in there was coming out, was done, was clear water, and then from there, we started flushing water into the clear well until that was cleared, because we had made it all the way to that, and again, some had been pumped out into the system. So without the plant running, nothing was being pushed out farther into the system. So then, with the backwash, we started backwashing, or when we started flushing the hydrants, the one there in Bracken, he turned it on, and it was pink a little bit, and then it cleared up, while we hadn't started pumping water out of the tank, out of the plant yet. So that water was coming from the water tower direction, the water going back, which was great, because that meant we were kind of cleaning that line back towards us. And when we turned the plant on, that water went back to be in pink for a short period of time until it got flushed out of the piping up to that point. At the same time, we've had two other hydrants on, or they had been flushed, preventing anything from going that direction. And so this is the pink hue and the process of flushing. The other, the beaker that was up there earlier, I was just curious about, because I thought, well, three parts per million, what does that look like? So I said, well, let's take one ML. 1 ML, put it in 1,000 MLs, and that's one part per million. And that's what that beaker color represents. So that's one part per million. That stuff is really kind of strong color to it. Now, as far as people that are worried about the water in the city, the amount that causes real problems is about 200 parts per million. And you have to ingest, if you ingest a small amount of that, it could give you some intestinal discomfort and issues. But ours, the fact that we're only using three parts per million to even treat it, we're well below any harmful effects. It's more of an aesthetic thing and what it looks like. And people, you know, they don't, they don't like funny looking water. So basically, that's, that's the summarization. We've now got this pump scaled properly. We're going to pay attention real close the next time we backwash it on Friday to make sure it operates like we want it to and we don't get anything pink. And hopefully that will mitigate any problems that we have.
Very good. City Manager Cole, anything you'd like to add?
I would just like to thank Superintendent Briggs for his excellent communication of the issue both last week and this week, and your explanation here and the resolve. We certainly appreciate it.
Very good. And for the record, I did notice a slight pink issue to the water last Wednesday, I believe. I had to go home this afternoon for an appointment, and it was recommended by the active Acting City Manager that I run my water, which I did liberally from about 1:30 to probably 2:30, and did not notice any pink issue or discoloration. So I think the steps that you took today to mitigate the effects broadly on residents were successful, and I'm glad that you appear to have the matter resolved. So thank you for that. We'll do questions if councilmembers have any. Again, I'll start to my right and to my left. Councilmember Lash, any questions for either the Acting City Manager or wastewater treatment, water treatment superintendent?
No, as somebody who has to deal with this stuff all through my career again, you know, I appreciate especially this picture because it really, you know, visuals is the best thing in the world because everybody was, I'm sure there was a spike in Google searches on harmful effect of potassium permanganate. And, you know, this is multiple times whatever was coming out in the drinking water. And I mean, even, even at that level, you can drink this. So I appreciate you going out and doing that.
No problem. You're welcome.
Councilmember Seale?
No questions, Your Honor.
Mayor Tim Dillon?
Thank you. Just to understand for residents, is there sort of a ring of like dilution as it would go from the plant out within the city, or would everybody be getting the same level of pink?
There's probably some dilution involved. Like I said, the fire hydrant that's just off, off Water Works there and that subdivision is basically a direct line from the way, from the plant to that. So if it goes to that, and then we had issues across the street in that subdivision last week, people were calling about discolored water. So they had probably more of it actually get to them than anybody else in the city because the water line's bigger going towards the tower initially, and then it splits up and goes in different directions. So it's, it does get diluted. But as you can tell, the color in the pale, the picture there, that's very, very slight compared to your one part per million. So even though it's, it's diluted, that color sticks around pretty well. If we, if we have something happens at the wastewater, at the water plant, in that room where we're mixing that up and it gets on the floor, it takes forever to clean it up.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Gearbaugh?
Just clarifying for myself, when you say scaled properly, is that something that should be from the programming of the system, or is it a manual intervention?
It's a programming issue. We, as we said, it was, part of the problem was that Tetra Tech thought of Pump 3 as a, as a spare pump, and it wasn't really a spare pump. So they didn't really understand how we were using it. So that's why the scaling, they were, they were using that higher percentage of use off of that pump than it should have been. We got that figured out today, and we made that change in the program. So again, fingers crossed, I shouldn't say that, but I would expect no issues on Friday when we backwash again, but we'll be paying really close attention.
Appreciate that explanation. My concern ends up that this is one of, one of three incidences with Tetra Tech that in the last few months have been an issue. So I think, and I believe our Acting City Manager is addressing these concerns. So we'll talk more at our asset management group. So thank you, Bill.
Councilmember Rice?
I appreciate all the quick communication, both to council, to staff, and out to the community. I think that's really the key to all of this is for the community to be able to rely on the information that's coming from either Facebook or however we're posting out on the city website to know, you know, first thing off the bat, no boil water advisory, second thing, not harmful, you know, things like that. So I really appreciate those efforts. I think that that's quite an advancement in our communications that we've had recently. So yeah, just keep, keep doing that. And it makes our jobs a lot easier as well so that we can, we can field questions from our constituents. So thank you for that.
Just so you're aware, I also called Eagle, our representative there, and let them know what's going on in case they happen to get any, gain phone calls.
That's actually a really good point. Yeah. Thank you for that.
Councilmember Harmont?
Yeah, proactive communication to ensure the confidence in Celine's drinking water is definitely a priority. Just to, can you reiterate again about where the point of detection was? Was that, do we, were we internally?
Yes.
Okay.
Internally, founded internally in the water treatment plan. And that's when, like I say, Ben called me. I was at the wastewater plant, obviously. And that's when I told him to just shut it down so nothing else went out. And we decided to try and figure out how we can mitigate what was going on.
Okay, so there was some sort of notification of outflow of irregularities. Do we have a poke o for that?
Anything else, Councilmember Harmont?
No, I don't.
Easy enough. Bill, thank you very much. Appreciate your time this evening. We are going to proceed now to the consent agenda. The following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion. However, at the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion. Councilmember Rice, I believe you wanted to remove Agenda Item 25-24, is that correct?
Yes, please remove for discussion.
Yeah. Would you like then to move, to approve the consent agenda as amended?
Yes, please.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Seconded by Dillon. I'll get you on the next one, Mr. Gearbaugh. Hearing no objection, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda as amended, striking Business Item 25-24, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move to new business, and first up is 25-24, Black History Month Resolution. This will be a motion to approve the resolution proclaiming February to be Black History Month in the city of Celine.
So move?
Move by Dillon, seconded by Rice to approve. Discussion.
Gearbaugh.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yep, Gearbaugh. My bad. Gearbaugh and Rice. Councilmember Rice?
Yes. Before we continue to vote to approve this, which will hopefully be approved, and after it's approved, I would like to read the resolution out loud, if that's okay. I would like to make a statement to our community. As we recognize Black History Month, we do so with a deep commitment to ensuring that the city of Celine continues to move forward on its diversity, equity, inclusion, and accessibility initiatives. These are not just words or aspirations. They are principles backed by research and proven to create the best outcomes for communities, workplaces, and society as a whole. Studies show that when we embrace diversity, we foster innovation, we strengthen economic growth, and build more resilient communities. Inclusion ensures that every voice is heard, every person is valued, and every resident has the opportunity to thrive. Equity and accessibility ensure that barriers are removed, creating a fair and just society for all. Organizations that prioritize inclusion report fewer workplace incidents, stronger problem-solving capabilities, and increased trust among employees. When diverse perspectives are welcomed and valued, decision-making improves, risk management strengthens, and teams operate more effectively under pressure. The National Safety Council Report on DEI and Workplace Injury Prevention says that fostering diversity and equity and inclusion is essential for creating safer and healthier work environments. The research highlights that workers of color face more work-related injuries and illnesses, and integrating DEI principles can help mitigate these disparities. Our city remains dedicated to this work, not in words, but in action. We will continue striving to be a place where everyone, regardless of background, can fully participate and feel a true sense of belonging. Today, as we honor the rich history, contributions, and resilience of Black Americans, let us also reaffirm our commitment to making Celine a more just, inclusive, and welcoming community for all. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you for that statement. Very well written. Is there any additional discussion on the motion that's been properly moved by Gearbaugh, seconded by Rice to approve the resolution? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Councilmember Rice, would you like to read the resolution at this time?
I would. Thank you. Whereas the origin of Black History Month began in 1915, half a century after the 13th Amendment abolished slavery in the United States and grew out of Negro History Week, the creation of noted historian Carl Carter G. Woodson and other prominent African-Americans, and whereas with the Civil Rights Movement and a growing awareness of Black identity, Black History Month, or National African-American History Month, evolved to an annual celebration of achievements by Black Americans and a time for recognizing the central role of African-Americans in U.S. history. And whereas the 2025 theme for Black History Month, Black Americans and Labor, considers activities, rituals, and initiatives that Black communities have done to be well throughout American history and in our time, especially through self-determination, mutual aid, and social support initiatives. And whereas the contributions of African-Americans from all walks of life, their endeavors to learn and thrive throughout history and make unforgettable marks on our nation as artists, scientists, educators, businesspeople, influential thinkers, members of the faith community, athletes, and political and governmental leaders reflect the greatness of the United States. And whereas remaining hopeful and confident about the path ahead and a time to acknowledge the courageous fight for their rights, liberties, and freedoms for all Americans, the City of Celine Council observes and honors Black History Month and encourages educators, students, and families to learn about the heritage and achievements of African-Americans through appropriate programs and activities that reflect the theme for 2025. Now therefore, it be resolved that the City of Celine does hereby adopt this resolution to honor Black History Month and recognize the tremendous contributions made by African-Americans.
Thank you very much. Much appreciated. We're going to move on to new, new business item 25-25, Resolution for Funding Commitment for the U.S. 12 Sidewalk Project, the same initiative we just received a presentation on. This will be a motion to acknowledge the memorandum from City Engineer Humpherson to approve or not to approve Resolution Number 2525, committing the necessary managing funds for the West U.S. 12 Sidewalk Project.
Acknowledge and approve.
Moved by Lash to acknowledge and to approve, and that was seconded by Seale. Is that correct, sir?
Yes, sir.
Very good. Engineer Humpherson, is there anything else you'd like to add for the public record this evening?
I was just going to follow up on a few of the questions that were brought up.
Please.
During the presentation, the first being the additional crossings between Mills and Austin Drive. It's my understanding that this has been brought up with MDOT before, and they're, and it's, they don't, there's not enough pedestrian traffic to justify like a mid-block crossing. MDOT's goal is to move traffic through town, and so getting the, I think the hawk symbol, whatever, that flashing rapid beacons is as a, a big ask for MDOT. And my understanding is that we've tried before and been told, no, we don't have the volume of pedestrian crossings there to, to look at that or to install that. So we'd be happy to follow up again with MDOT as part of this, but I'm not hopeful about that. And that's, I just wanted to, and I understand the concern. I've leapfrogged there many times myself between Mill Pond and Curtis Parks. The next question, Safe Road to Schools is something that we are working with Celine Area Schools on establishing. In fact, it's in their court now. The Engineering Department internal is who we volunteered as city staff to, to serve on a Safe Road to School Committee. The Safe Road to School has to be initiated by the schools, not the city. So we are working with the Wex Cleary. He's supposedly found a kind of someone to lead up that program internally to the schools, and we're just waiting to get that going and off the ground. I'm not certain if that will be pulled together in time for additional funding for this project or not, but there's other opportunities for Safe Road to Schools funds. I think the construction engineering, I thought they did a nice job of answering that. That's, but in my opinion, it is very important that we have someone on site making sure all of the backfill, all of the base of the sidewalk is installed properly. If, it's especially important in old utility trench, but it's also important in this grade. There's a lot of grading and base associated with the sidewalk that needs to be inspected to make sure they put it into specification. So that's the purpose for that, and that's pretty standard for engineering, the percentage that they put on there. The, I've added the non-motorized county grant to my list here, and I think the only other question I wrote down was Austin and Washington, but I'm now not remembering what the question was.
Yeah, that was my question. Austin Drive, is there any work or anything being considered for that Austin Drive? Because we know it's deteriorating too, and with all this work happening, I didn't know if we're going to grade and prepare for the real world replacement if we put curb and gutter in or what'll happen.
That is on our radar right now, one of the roads we're considering to, we're looking at. How about that? We are, we've asked Wade Trim to do a conceptual opinion of cost for that road, and because we're in the area, we think it makes sense absolutely to start looking at that. So, and it's in Washington, we also, we're looking at just getting some actual title work and figuring out exactly what the right of ways on Washington. As you know, Washington is more of a two-track than a road, right? It's, and I have, I have varying documents on how wide that road width is. That's something that we also hope to kind of iron out with this project.
Not just as long as we're doing it all as part of it, so it's good. Thank you.
Engineer Humpherson, I think the technical name of the county program, we would, we would be technically speaking eligible for connecting communities.
I wondered if it was that one, okay.
Couldn't remember it. Thanks.
Are there additional questions for Engineer Humpherson? Councilmember Dillon?
Actually, more. It's a style on the motion, if there's any opportunity for a friendly amendment to add an up to dollar amount.
That, if you want to broach that as a friend, as a friendly amendment, I'd have to defer to the mover and the second. Mr. Lash and Mr. Seale, would you be amenable to adding the dollar amount to the motion? Start with Mr. Lash.
I mean, yeah, up to, I guess, anyway. I mean, we want to give them a little bit of leeway because I know things can change a lot, so.
What's the recommended dollar amount?
I think it was 215.
For our match, it was the?
Yes, for the match.
The question, so you're saying limit the match?
Right now, the match is 216, 820. So I mean, going like 220.
The not to exceed dollar amount, 220,000. It's up to you, Mr. Lash, if you want to accept that as a, as a friendly amendment or not.
That could.
Okay, Mr. Seale?
It's kind of hard to predict when we're talking almost two years out. Is there enough in there for a contingency in case prices increase?
Prices do, are priced out. Correct me if I'm wrong, please, Wade Trim, but I believe they price them out for the year of construction. This resolution, I mean, we will be coming back with these dollar amounts in our budgets, right? So we have money in our current budget for design, which we're spending. We're going to come back with it in, well, it's going to be in our capital improvement plan that's coming to council, I think, on the 24th. That's, it'll be a project in there. The dollar amount will coincide as far as the city and grants is what you see in this packet. But then we'll, we'll be coming back in the future budget year of '27, right, is that we'll have this dollar amount in the actual budget that we plan to expend. The key point to me right now really is getting the resolution into SEMCO. So if you limit it at this point, I mean, that's what's in the resolution, but so it's not, to me, it's one of, I mean, the key, the critical path right now is getting this into SEMCO so we get into the funding cycle, so we meet the February 19th application deadline. So I think either way that you pass it would satisfy that need.
You're not going to hurt my feelings. It's okay. It's okay.
Maybe we could amend it up future.
And if I may, I would like to also add that, you know, if they're considering us for a grant, we may not want to put an amount in there because they may be willing to give us a certain amount and see that we're only, we'll have an up to not to exceed, which may disqualify us in their minds. So I would recommend kind of leaving it as is for the moment, and if we need to add it at a later point in time, we can.
That's fine.
Can we take the recommendation of our, if everyone's good with that? All right. Additional questions? Mr. Gearbaugh?
I was just going to say, can we put in the motion estimated cost of 725 or 24? I just want that dollar amount out there in, in the record. This is not a cheap.
You offering that as a formal amendment or as a friendly amendment?
As a formal amendment.
Okay, so restate your language then.
For an estimated cost of 720?
722, 734.
Yes, thank you.
Everyone clear on that amendment that's on the floor? Is there a second to that?
Second.
Seconded by Rice. Okay, we'll vote on the amendment first. All those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Engineer Humpherson. Is there any additional discussion on the original motion? Then I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you all. We move on to the final new business item of the evening, 2527, September 18th, 2024, sewer backup claim payment. This will be a motion to acknowledge, receive the memorandum, and to approve or not to approve an additional payment in a total amount of $38,257.3 to pay insurance claims to Arbor Scientific, American Soy, and Hartford and Hanover Insurance Companies.
To acknowledge and approve.
Moved by Seale to acknowledge and to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mayor Tim Dillon. Acting City Manager Cole?
Good evening. The city received final notarized release to issue the payment to Hanover Insurance on behalf of Arbor-
on behalf of Arbor Scientific. The $100,000 check was issued by Michigan Municipal League, which is our insurance provider, and this is the gap, the shortfall of the difference between what's owed and what the insurance provided.
Very good. Are there questions for the acting city manager? Mr. Girbaugh?
What's the likelihood of us recovering that $138,000 between the insurance company and us?
Well, the $100,000 is being recovered from MML, so that portion's being paid, so it's only the $38,000 that we are, and the likelihood of that is, is very little.
Okay. Who's, who's working on it? The insurance company or is it us?
Michigan Municipal League.
Yeah, I hope they, they will continue to proceed with this because I believe that this, again, is another example of Tetra Tech's work. Thank you.
Any additional questions? Any subsequent discussion on the motion? It's been properly moved by Seo, seconded by Dillon, to acknowledge and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to the discussion portion of our agenda, reports and other announcements, including updates from commissions, committees, or task forces and working groups. Mr. Lash, I'll start with you.
Nothing at this time.
Mr. Seo?
Nothing at this time.
Mayor Protim Dillon?
Let's see, the transition team continues to meet weekly. I think everything is on track with that. The asset management committee will be meeting this week. Urban County will be meeting next week. The Cable Commission will be meeting next week. And the Zoning Board of Appeals was canceled this week due to lack of agenda items.
Mr. Girbaugh?
None at this time.
Councilmember Rice?
I had my first meeting with youth council as the new council liaison and I'm really looking forward to working with the students and getting, you know, more active feedback from the students on some policies that we've been discussing here on council. Second is we will have Engineer Humpherson at our Parks Commission meeting coming up in two weeks to give us an update on the status of the Mill Pond dam feasibility studies. We've had a lot of conversations about that. I will continue to encourage folks to join us for our Parks Commission meetings. I do want to stress that the Parks Commission and the city's Parks Department are two different entities. We have fielded a lot of questions that are more geared toward city staff, the city manager and the city engineer, but feel free to bring them to the Parks Commission and we can use our liaison authorities to get those questions to the appropriate staff. But please understand that Parks Commission is a volunteer-based commission that focuses on priorities for parks and things like volunteering throughout the parks and helping set neighborhood parks priorities. And the city staff, DPW, and Parks Department are the ones who are doing the capital improvement planning and project management for, for projects. So there is a difference. Happy to field questions at any time. I just don't want folks to be disappointed by sitting through a two-hour Parks Commission meeting that's not going to address their questions. Also, lastly, the Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Accessibility Committee is working through creating our strategic plan for the year. We are dividing and conquering, so we will be getting back together in a couple of weeks to kind of assess where we are with our ideas and we'll probably start working those ideas through some of our liaisons, through city staff, and through the community as well. So keep your ears open for some opportunities to provide feedback there.
Very good. Councilmember Harmaugh?
Yes, as the representative for the Historic District Commission, I'd like to welcome our newest appointment of Jerry Harrison, so that's all I have.
Very good. I just wanted to provide an update. There's a lot going on this weekend, but our Rec Center hosted an open house on Sunday, the 2nd, from 10 to 4. And while the weather was a bit inclement, especially in the morning, it was a very well-attended function. Our staff did a phenomenal job. I was there for about three or four hours assisting and greeting members and prospective members. I can report that we sold, these are, these are a combination of renewals and new memberships. During the open house yesterday, 74 memberships were sold and over 100 swim evaluations occurred. So it was, it was a really good event. That, that place was, was packed, at least in the afternoon when I was there, from about 12 to 4. So again, kudos to Director Lambert and her staff on, on hosting and organizing such a great event. It was well-received by the community. If there are no additional reports or announcements, we'll proceed to the second public comment period. Under the Open Meetings Act, any person may come forward at this time, may comment or question to city council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but of course not required to state their name and address for the record. Are there any citizen comments? Please come forward. You have three minutes.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Elizabeth Gersh. I wanted to present my concern about the gender-inclusive restrooms and locker rooms at the Celine Rec Center because of the truth that biological-born males are stronger than biological females. And the, the fact also that that was not, what I was informed was that that's not a new policy, particularly to when it came out in the handbook, but it had been a policy and only then came out in the handbook. And the fact that that wasn't immediately disclosed, I suppose, broadly to the people